We'll begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Tiedemann, Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sidoti.
Here.
Mr. Snow. Here. Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes of the May 24 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have eight public hearings this evening. It says nine on the agenda, but we're going to dismiss number two at the client's request. So if you're here for that, it won't be discussed this evening. So the format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location, then those wishing to speak in favor are given an opportunity, then those wishing to speak against are afforded a similar opportunity, then we close the public portion and allow for questions of the commission. So with that in mind, first item this evening is a conditional use permit to allow traditional retail activities incidental to permitted uses at 7529 to 7531 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Would you identify yourself for the clerk, please?
My name is Scotty Andrews, and I'm managing member and property owner of 7529 and 7531 Tyler Boulevard.
Okay.
And Brandon Morris with Furniture Warehouse, and applicant for 7529 and 7531 Tyler Boulevard.
Now, give us a little overview of what you want to do at that location.
That location, what we're requesting is a small retail area that pretty much follows the code, which would create a display area 25% or less of the gross floor area and 15% or less of the total retail sales.
Okay.
So we're requesting a small showroom and retail sale area in our building, and in addition to that, it would have limited hours of operation for that aspect of the building.
The primary purpose of the building is internet furniture sales. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Now, in the past, Mr. Zeeman, I got a question for you. In the past, retail sales were incidental to what was manufactured on site, so help me with that.
Well, some years ago, the code was amended to differentiate between traditional retail. Now, traditional retail is that direct customer-to, you know, store transaction where the goods, the products, they're all on display there. You'd go in, kick the tires, so to speak, and you could walk out with your product. Obviously, with the advent of internet sales, the code was amended to differentiate between non-traditional retail, Amazon obviously is your best example of that, and traditional retail, so that non-traditional retail would be permitted, because it's more akin to warehousing than it is to traditional retail. So now, obviously, there is potentially some, you know, walk-in trade, even though a business may be predominantly internet retail-based, just like a manufacturer, you know, obviously predominantly they're shipping their products wherever for ultimate sale. Nonetheless, there is a local market to be served by those products as well, and so it does, if the commission agrees, you know, fit in with the overall district regulations to, again, to limit retail sales, traditional retail sales, to the permitted principal use in this district.
Thank you. Commission members, any questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Mr. Varga.
Is this a current business? Do you operate somewhere else this way?
Yeah, currently, I operate with 7530 Mentor Avenue with Best Furniture.
Okay. And what percentage, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but what percentage is your sales of walk-in trade?
Right now, it's zero. I do everything online.
So everything is online, so basically you're just moving this business, same format, maybe there may be more people, but probably could be the same.
Yeah, exactly. Just moving the format, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sidoti.
I don't know if I read this somewhere. You're not selling appliances, correct?
No, I'm not.
Just discontinued and damaged merchandise?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. You read the conditions that are stated in the report. I can emphasize, number one, we don't want anything stored outside.
Okay.
Busted-up boxes, crates, metal bands, nothing. It has to be stayed inside or properly stored on-site until you dispose of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else for the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
Motion to approve with two conditions.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was easy, right?
Thank you.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion on number two to dismiss without prejudice, Larry?
Yes.
Motion to dismiss item number two on tonight's agenda without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item three, conditional use permit to allow temporary events at 96 Lake Overlook Drive. Is that applicant here? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is Warren Parks. I'm a trustee with the Mentor Hennel's Community Center, as well as a co-chairperson for the Mentor Festival Association Parade Committee.
So this is your traditional Fourth of July parade?
This is our traditional Fourth of July parades. It's been going on for 66 years. The only difference is, as you can see on areas one and two on the overhead, is that we're adding bands this year. Typically, we have a DJ come in to take care of PA systems and play music. We've never had a permit for that DJ in the past, but this year, with the addition of the bands, we wanted to get a permit and do everything correctly.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments? Kathy from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sidoti.
Will there be any security present for this parade?
We've never had security in the past. The Mentor Police will be present for the parade itself, as far as the kickoff and unblocking traffic, but after that, they typically leave. We don't anticipate problems. We didn't, we don't have security coming for the purpose.
All right. For restroom facilities, the community center will be open?
Yes, the community center doors will be open for the event.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else for the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the six conditions identified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Ready for another 66 years, right?
Pardon?
Ready for another 66 years.
Maybe not me, hopefully the parade, yes.
Item four, conditional use permit to allow car wash at 6985 Center Street. See that applicant's here? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Jim Brown. Jim Brown, Classic Auto Group. Clearing the lines. 30 Centalecium.
Rich Cantons, L.A.
Right ahead when you're ready.
Okay. We purchased Great Lakes Bank back in March, and we purchased the building for the purposes of building a dealership. Only at the moment, those plans are on hold, and what we propose is to build a state-of-the-art modern car wash for the general public and for our, for Classic Auto Group's internal use. Land Design is our engineer, and they've got a site plan, but I, site plans to me are not as exciting as an actual picture of what we're going to produce here, so I want to just show you quickly what our idea is.
Go right ahead.
I think it's going to be very exciting. It is a, it's a significant investment, starting with the equipment. It's not going to be your typical, traditional, you know, track with a dolly that pulls your car through. This is a conveyor system, a flat conveyor system. It's quiet. It's going to have the capacity to push 180 cars an hour through the tunnel. It is, it's all glass. If you pull in a little closer, you'll see that it's all glass on the north and the south side. The roof is glass. The areas where you can vacuum your car, that'll be a nice glass, modern look, have a nice modern look. So that's the equipment, the building, the facility, the landscaping. It's currently on, this is a property that occupies two acres of property. We're going to raise the bank building, and 38% of this property will then, will turn it into landscaping, grass, shrubs, trees. It'll be, when you drive by, you're not going to say, "Wow, what a pretty car wash." You're going to say, "That's a beautiful building." And we have a reputation up old. I feel like the site needs improvement. The city, I know, requires and expects a beautiful area that complements their reputation, and I just am very proud, and I hope that this is approved.
Okay.
That's all you've got.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Go right ahead. Now, if you identify yourself for the clerk, please.
I'm Alan Brown. No relation to Jim. I've owned, and my wife, my wife and I have owned Gallery One for 45 years. We've been successful in town, very successful business for 45 years. Thank God for Mentor. I'm concerned about the traffic in that spot on Frachi Court, because cars are going to come in, and it's going to be clogged up with the car wash, and we just don't need that kind of traffic on, right in that spot. I don't know why he's tearing down a nice bank building and replacing it with a car wash. I think the original plans was to put an agency in there, car agency, which evidently has fallen through or whatever. I was in favor of that. He would have taken our property. I'm 80 years old, and maybe it's time for me to retire, but I don't want to see a car wash. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out, we did meet with the applicant earlier this week, the administration, and addressed several of the conditions that were in the staff report that was provided to you last week. In particular, one of the items that Mr. Alan Brown just mentioned was the circulation, which has been revised, and if maybe you could show that revision on there, just for purposes of what some of the improvements that can be made to improve traffic circulation, since that was probably the biggest concern from the administration. And so the service drive that serves Gallery One, as well as Frachi Florist, would obviously, you know, be maintained, but there'd no longer be an access point from that service drive to the car wash. So only, the traffic to the car wash would only be entered from Frachi Court. So that was one of the big changes that I know was made, as one of the conditions that was provided in the staff report, and I don't know if they want to touch on any of the other items, but the other issue was how was the remaining wall, once the Great Lakes Bank Building was going to be removed, how that was going to look in appearance, you know, to now be exposed.
Okay, well, we can ask that. We can ask that question. So when the, when the bank building comes down, what's the intent?
The intent is to restore the building to its existing condition, so the exterior wall is a colored split face. It's in good condition. Our intention is a false front that really protects it today. So we'll remove the false front, we'll remove the roof part of the building, we'll replace, we'll repair the roof along the north edge of the building, paint anything, there's some holes in the masonry that we'll patch, and there's a false floor that we'll remove and repair, and then we'll put landscaping on the north side of that, extending 20 feet out from the wall, and put evergreen trees to protect it as well and break up the look. I have a rendering of what it might look like.
Other way around?
Other way.
So if you see the, this area here is where there's a, probably about a four-foot hallway that ties the existing bank building to the floor, to the art gallery. So that false front will be taken down. There's a floor that will be taken out. This roofline will be repaired and grass, and then the architect that did the rendering for us went a little overboard with some of the plants, but it will be evergreen trees so that it's pretty all year long, and 20 feet of landscaping out from that. So Mr. Brown's building will be returned to the position it was whenever that bank building was added to it, how many years ago that was.
Any thoughts, Kathy?
You know, certainly, the landscaping was one of the items that was requested, and the reduction in the amount of pavement that was shown on the original site plan that you had received. So that has been accomplished with the landscaping that's been provided. I'll also note that with regard to the change to the access point on the service drive, we did circulate that to the Engineers Department, and they were satisfied with those changes to alleviate any kind of backup at 615 and Frachi.
Gotcha. And that is a signalized intersection, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I thought there was one more question that you were going to ask. Kathy, was there something else that you guys have brought up about circulation?
Well, certainly, the other big, the big item was the, with the stacking of the cars before they enter into the, into the wash itself, we were concerned about any car getting trapped, if you will, so they have provided.
A bypass.
A bypass lane, which is shown on there, if you want to point to them.
So there's only two bypass lanes, or is this? Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, bypass lane is right here.
Right. And it's a one-way out. It'll have a gate on it to prevent people from entering the wrong way into the car wash. In addition, it's already an existing bypass lane in this area, so if there was a gate malfunction, or the customer's credit card didn't work, or something like that, this area will be attended so that we can let anybody out that needs out. They can just exit out and leave the car wash. The other thing that's very important is what we're proposing is changing the curb cuts to make it line up a little bit better. So there's an existing curb cut here that will be closed off and put with landscaping. There's a very small curb cut over in this corner that will be closed, and we'll replace it with one 30-foot curb cut that is designed to allow easy access in and out of the car wash. So the flow would be, come down the Frachi Court, go around to the back of the property away from these other businesses, enter into the car wash, and then follow the arrows through into the tunnel itself and then leave. Once you leave the car wash, then you can either exit out and go to the vacuum area, which is away from the car wash, or you can just leave the premises completely.
You might want to mention noise control for your equipments.
Yes. So we've also taken precautions with noise control. The dryers will be inside the building, not outside, so that it'll be much quieter. The media that we use, that we're intending to use for this car wash will be slower revolutions, slower rotations. It'll stay longer on the vehicle to reduce the noise, and then the central vac unit is, there will be a noise room in the building itself, so the vacuum cleaners won't be making the kind of noise you might expect. It's just a normal air suction, not the vacuum cleaner itself, because that will be housed itself inside the building.
You have a little puzzled look on your face. Are you okay?
Nope, just looking.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Anything for the applicant?
I just want some clarification.
Go right ahead.
The, what will the actual finished material be on the restored elevation?
On restored elevation? Let's go back to.
I mean, I see the picture, and the trees look very nice, and the bushes look real nice. What is that material?
Yeah, as I was saying, the existing material in the building is existing. It's four-inch high, 16-long, split-face CMU.
And that's what it's going to be?
Yeah. Well, it's currently white today, and I was going to repaint it and touch up when it's all said and done, because Larry said there's holes been put through over time when it was added on, so we'll make sure it's all painted, and then obviously do the trees.
Okay. But it's not like, it's not like concrete block that's being.
No, I have a picture.
It is a concrete block. It's, yeah.
But it's, it's split-face. It's an exterior material. I mean, it's an elevational material. It's not just a.
Correct.
Okay. I see. I understand. That was my question. Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Mr. Sidoti.
Mr. Brown, you may have said this, is this project for after Mazda's reconstructed, or is, do you say Mazda's not going forward now?
We would start this immediately if we were granted a conditional use permit. We're going to, our intention is to put trailers on the property where Mazda store is currently, and that frees us up to modify this building and make it look.
So, one more quick question. You said, I think Mr. Brown says he weren't successful in gaining a dealership at that site, so if at some point you are successful in gaining a dealership, does the car wash remain?
It does.
Okay.
Find another place for.
Another spot.
Dealership.
Okay.
I do have one thing I'd like to add, if it's possible. I know that the public portion is closed, but I do have a letter from Rick Frachi supporting this, and should I, can I submit that?
Sure.
It reads, "Please find this to be my support to Jim Brown and Classic Auto Group in their effort to obtain a conditional use permit. Sincerely, Rick Frachi."
So are you going to buy all your flowers there now?
Well, I offered Alan free car washes as well, so I'm surprised he's not supporting. So I'm kidding.
So commissioners, any questions? Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one quick question about the process. We'll see this again with the final plan?
Yes.
Right, because right now, the sketches are fine, but I'd like to see the actual materials and colors and.
Our intention is to submit everything that we need for final plans tomorrow, so this will be on the July 5 meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is that a motion?
A motion to, I don't know how many.
Mr. Chairman, are we voting on the CUP?
We're voting on the CUP.
Yes. Make a motion to vote on the CUP with, I don't know how many conditions there were. I'm looking at the wrong one.
There's 10 on the original.
And make a motion to approve with 10.
There's just one.
10 are for the site plan.
The 10 are for the site plan.
Okay. We're only talking about the CUP.
For one condition.
So the one condition.
Wow. Second.
I know.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Mr. Brown, are you happy with the resolution of your building?
I think that's the side of my building.
Right.
When they tear down the bank.
Right.
That's good.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we once stood alone.
Right. Okay. So that would be a yes.
I'm happy with this.
Okay. Thank you. You're all set. Conditional use permit to allow vehicle servicing at 9644 Old Johnny Cake. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
If you'd come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Good evening, I'm Jason McQuillough, resident of Mentor.
At William Fraser, I own the property.
Tell us what you want to do.
Yes, so what I'd like to do is store some personal vehicles and equipment in this building, and then occasionally tinker with my toys. I own a repair facility in Willoughby Hills, so this isn't a business, this is just for me. You know, 20% of the time, I'll be there tinkering, 80%, it's just going to be used for storage.
Gotcha. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sidoti.
You read the conditions, the six conditions tied to this vote.
I did, sir, and I also talked to Mr. Decker on Tuesday, and he advised me that condition six would not be needed because I'm not an actual repair facility.
Administration, is that correct?
I haven't verified that with Mr. Decker. We can certainly do that.
So if we leave number six in, but it's not applicable at such time as she talks to Mr. Decker?
Yes, sir.
Then you don't need it?
Yes, sir. I mean, I can always take a portable ventilation system from my shop that I own to bring there if it's needed, but again, there's never going to be a car running inside that building, only to pull it in and pull it out.
Okay.
So.
So is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So if it needs, needs it, you'll do it. If it doesn't need it, you won't do it?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll leave it alone?
That's good.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item six, conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility at 6866 Center Street. There are no points for being early.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Okay. I'm Duncan Cade of Interstate Construction. I'm the construction manager for Thomas Five Limited, who is the Wendy's franchisee that is going to be owning and operating this location. I think we are on the drive-through conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Naturally, the, a drive-through is essential for a quick-service restaurant. Land Design has worked, I think, closely with staff on recommendations for circulation about the site. This site has been designed, we feel well to allow the drive-through facility.[1660.23] This site has been designed, we feel well to allow the drive-through facility. As staff mentioned, up to ten cars for stacking, probably more. We have wide drive aisles, a very wide drive aisle around the front of the building. As staff recommended, we have reduced the entrance and exits so that they are one way. The entire site is one-way traffic around the site. The order station will be placed so that the only way to get to the order station is you pull in, circulate around the building, get into a stacking lane, and then you will get to the order station. So, this will, you know, create the stacking lane on-site and naturally, as you know, there are no entrances into the Wendy's off of Center Street. Entrances are from the shopping center drive. So, we feel that we have done everything to try to create the best environment for the drive-through at this location. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, we'll get to those. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
No, only that the site plan that you're looking at now is a revision to what you had received in your packets last week and it's an update based on the conditions under the preliminary site plan, which we'll discuss later.
At some point subsequent to now. So, the only thing we're talking about now is the CUP for the drive-through. So, any questions regarding the CUP for the drive-through? During none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of the CUP.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Item seven, we'll be back to you with the preliminary shortly.
They are, huh?
Okay?
Okay, we're number seven, I believe.
Well, number seven was the CUP for the.
We're also number seven.
I'm ahead of myself here. Okay, outside dining and drinking. Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Thomas Five does feel a patio at this location would be very good for the community, you know, and years ago, when quick service restaurants started, it was a building. Then the drive-through came along and now, you know, they feel that this can be a location where you meet friends, family, spend a little bit of time, and having the patio provides that type of environment naturally and, you know, when you have the nice weather to enjoy it. They feel that it adds to the look of the building. You just don't have the blank building there. Having the patio just is a providing, is an inviting environment. We did, there is no problem with staff's comments about the umbrellas, absolutely no markings on them or graphics, which that is fine. No music, Wendy's doesn't do music anyway, so staff's comments and recommendations is not a problem. So, it is being shown three tables seating four people. There is an ADA accessible table, so it would be a total of twelve persons for seating. So, if you have any questions.
We'll get to them. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion now. Any comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment to point out with regard to the patio is the need for bollards to be installed in compliance with our section 1173-10 for parking lot safety standards, which the applicant has been made aware.
And I'm sorry, that is totally fine. That is being incorporated into the final site plan.
Okay, so we'll see him at that point. Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I'm quickly looking through the drawings, but there is a fence, that's what I want to see. There is, besides the bollards protecting the seating area, there is a fence.
Yes.
That encloses the area completely?
Yes.
With gates?
Typically, no. Usually, there is a walk that leads to it and an opening, but the fence would be, the walk would be next to the building and then a fence would start and enclose the rest of the patio.
I guess my, the only suggestion that might end up becoming more than a suggestion, on the south end of the patio, you have the wall coming in from the north side, but on the south side, as soon as you walk, step off of that paved area, you step right into a traffic lane. I might want to see some type of.
Yes.
I think actually, that could just be enclosed.
Well, my concern is that for children or just for anyone leaving that area and walking to the south, they immediately walk into a traffic lane of people who are now preoccupied with not spilling their drink.
Right.
And so, I'd like to see maybe more, either a gate or something that would protect the pedestrian.
Well, and a lot of times what we do do, and this is a concern for Wendy's, we will put a railing right here so that they have to walk one direction or the other. It slows them down.
Something to keep them from just, without thinking, walking into the path of adjacent traffic.
And that's absolutely no problem.
Okay.
Thank you for that's good suggestion.
Anything else? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. You want to include that as a stipulation?
Yeah, stipulation, that is some pedestrian control.
Okay.
Pedestrian control at the.
That's the whole, that's the whole condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Now, we'll see you later.
Condition use permit to allow vehicle servicing at 8807 Mentor Avenue. You sat patiently waiting for us, right?
This is, which number is this? Number eight.
Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Jason Bowley, civil engineering consultant with R.A. Smith.
And what are we doing at that location?
Discount Tire is a privately held company and has been in business for fifty-seven years. Store operates eight to six, Monday through Friday, and Saturday eight to five. It's closed on Sundays. The facility will have a total of fifteen to twenty employees. Retail sale and installation of passenger car and light truck tires and wheels is only business activity. Free air pressure checks, tire rotations, flat tire repairs, and tire inspections are also provided. They do not perform any mechanical repairs or handle any hazardous ways such as antifreeze or motor lubricants. All sales and installations are completed same day and within the building in a safe and clean environment. No vehicles are allowed to be parked on-site overnight and there is no exterior storage or displays proposed. All used tires will be stored inside the building for regular pickup by licensed recycler. The building is designed to store an extensive tire and wheel inventory. Showrooms are clean, modern, and bright, creating an inviting and comfortable customer experience. The planned project site is located at 8807 Mentor Avenue. Discount Tire views this as a valuable site as the proposed development is consistent with neighboring developments along Mentor Avenue. Additionally, Discount Tire foresees this as an exciting opportunity to develop a new store with a minimal impact. Discount Tire has a strong desire to establish a presence in Mentor as they look to expand east. This site is approximately one acre and is currently occupied by a vacant building. Discount Tire intends to replace the building footprint. This means they will reuse the existing driveway opening, reuse the existing parking lot, existing utility laterals, maintain the existing storm system, and for the most part, they will maintain the existing extent of impervious pavement. Unlike the previous use, a parking lot along Mentor Avenue is not proposed. Therefore, we will increase the total green space on this site by approximately two thousand and four hundred square feet and provide new landscaping to dress up the front yard. Other site improvements will include updating the site lighting, landscape, and renovated and/or updated fencing. A staff report was transmitted to R.A. Smith on June 8th with comments and recommendations from various entities of the Mentor Economic and Community Development Group. With the exception of comments pertaining to the buffer yards, we do not foresee any issues with satisfying any of these comments.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Kathy, any comments from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
This is not dealing with the buffer rating.
No. Anything else you'd like to add?
That's it for now.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess the concern we're gonna have is on the buffering, as you might expect.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about that now or?
Well, we can, because I think before we get too much farther into it, we probably should talk about that.
Okay, I had some more to say about that, if I may continue.
Right ahead.
Okay. When we were looking to design a new layout to redevelop this site, it is important to note that this site has some constraints that make it challenging for redevelopment. It's a narrow site at only a hundred ninety-four lineal feet. Additionally, the zoning for this site also abuts residential zoning. Due to this, there are additional buffers required to the side and the rear of twenty-five feet that reduce the amount of developmental area. With that being said, the proposed redevelopment intends to seek relief in the buffer yard setbacks by reusing the existing parking lot and buffers already in place. We intend to comply with the buffer for the new building, however, I believe any end-user for this site will need to request some variation of a reduced landscape buffer. Just some important items to note in requesting relief of this buffer are that, number one, truck maneuvering. Truck turn models have been run and indicate every foot of this existing impervious surface will be required for maneuvering in and out of the site for deliveries. Parking is also a concern. Discount Tire needs thirty-six, all thirty-six proposed spaces on the site plan. Fifteen of those spaces on Saturday for employees, customers with appointments that leave cars for the entire day and occupy spaces, customers stopping in for estimates, and other customers doing tire rotations and tire replacements without appointments, appointments, plus air checks. The twenty-one remaining customer spaces is barely adequate to handle the store volumes on Saturdays and other peak demand holidays. We normally like to have about forty spaces as a minimum, so thirty-six is tight already. The proposed reduction by the city of twelve spaces recommended by the staff would be detrimental to this project and simply would not work. Another item is the rear neighbor, the residential zoning right behind our site. My coworker, Todd Mosier, met with this neighbor that lives behind the site and he was not concerned about the buffer yard dimension, but he did want the fence to be either renovated or replaced. He was supportive of the business hours ending at 6:00 PM during the week and closed on Sunday. Many of his previous concerns have been with noise and nuisances later at night when the previous restaurants were open much later than what Discount Tire will be. He was also glad to hear that the business would be an owner-operator in lieu of a lease to a tenant and that we're going to be making the parking lot more secure and visible than Mentor Avenue by adding better lighting to detract less than desirable late-night activities. And one last item is safety. Discussions have taken place in regards to the security and safety concerns with the police chief at this site. The police chief agreed that more visibility and lighting would obviously help. Therefore, it is our opinion that more low-level landscaping and evergreens at the pedestrian level is not desirable as it often is tempting places for people to hide and seclude themselves between the eight-foot wall and the evergreens and possibly discarding cans, bottles, and other trash items over the fence into the neighbor's yard.
So, you think that people are gonna hang out there? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what we think, is people hang out back there in the dark right now, especially if there's a landscape buffer, they can really hide in the trees, between the wall and the trees and do less than desirable activities. Here is a conceptual landscape plan we put together. This is our vision of what the rear buffer yard will look like if we go to develop this And just in summary, it is our desire to develop this site with a minimal impact by replacing the building footprint only. It is our wish that we can reuse the and improve the existing buffer space as shown on this plan. This plan includes new shade trees at twenty feet on center and a row of shrubs, two to three feet, two to three feet high to soften the bottom of the existing fence. Discount Tire is a great transitional use from the more active commercial uses in the corridor to the residential neighborhood behind because it is relatively a low-traffic generator, has limited hours of operation, and would be very responsible corporately-owned store. In addition, replacing the front parking lot with landscaping in a new building will help to beautify the commercial corridor as well. Based on the history of this site, is it not conducive to the restaurant industry? Has there ever been eight restaurants to come and go over the past twenty years? This is a great opportunity for this site to see a new, modern building without the worry of it being left vacant in a few years. If you have any questions.
So, do you guys own the property now?
We do not own the property now.
So, you have a purchase agreement?
Yes.
Subsequent to our, giving you an affirmative decision?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make mention of the fact that there've been eight restaurants in there, I think the rent was pretty high and I think that's probably why the restaurants didn't make it, but that's no reflection on your operation, obviously.
Okay.
Mr. Zeeman, Ms. Mitchell, I mean, you guys worked very hard on this buffering over the course of time, so any thoughts about the buffering?
It's not there, you know, to be cast aside merely for convenience. You know, it is important relative to the variables with certain types of uses. Granted, while they're not offering full, you know, mechanical services here to vehicles, nonetheless, and I leave it to the commission's judgment relative to the noise that a tire store can generate, any odors that the tire store can generate even during, you know, normal hours of operation. So, those buffer requirements, you know, are the product of making sure that adverse secondary effects on adjacent residential properties are guarded against. To minimize that for the sake of convenience, you know, is a precedent that I think the commission needs to be very, very guarded about setting. It may be that the site is just too small and sacrificing the buffer as the solution to the fact that the site is too small for this particular operation is really what's driving all, is really, well, it seems to be what's purely driving the request. As for safety and security, it's always a concern, but again, we've got one of the most excellent police forces you'll find anywhere here in the city and they are immediately responsive to any concerns there are. So, if there's loitering or some type of trespass going on back there, certainly anyone aware of it could call it to their attention and get a very, very immediate response. And obviously, security cameras are, have become the norm now for commercial properties and so, anyone back there ought to be aware that their activities, if they are improper, would be subject to monitoring. So, I think that there are other ways to minimize the security risks in a more direct ways than saying, well, we shouldn't have trees or landscaped areas in the city. That seems to be a bit of a disconnect in terms of that analysis. Thank you, sir.
Any comeback? Any thoughts? I mean, the buffers are here for a reason.
Yes, and.
You are new construction, so, I mean, you're gonna need to adhere to what, are you saying that the buffering is a deal killer?
The buffer for any end-user for the site, well, there will be some buffer variance request for this site, no matter what goes in. The site, like I said, is a narrow site with twenty-five feet on each side. You don't have room to place a building and a drive aisle and parking. There's simply not room for all of it. Like, whoever ends up here, there will have to be some, unless it's a redus custard stand, some sort of buffer variance will have to be approved so this lot does not remain vacant. And in regards to the noise and work activities, everything that Discount Tire does is within the building. They have garage doors, they close the garage doors. Honestly, don't think that the neighbors will hear anything from this site, especially, they close at six o'clock, which is a very reasonable hour, so, especially when people are going to bed at night, there's nothing going on at this site, whereas if you have a bar in here, they can get loud. I think this would be a much more appropriate use than a bar or another restaurant.
Commission members, questions?
I just have a question for the city. The existing parking layout for the restaurant does not conform to the setback requirements, correct? It's grandfathered in?
Correct.
So, if another restaurant moved in, number nine, they would be in conformance to leave the parking the way it is. It's because this is a new building that the buffers have to be updated to the current requirements of the city?
Yes, since this was considered new construction.
I understand, right. I just wanted to clarify that so that it's clear what.
And the significant, and there's change in use.
And change in use, but I mean, just the fact that there's parking there, but we would not, we would want to see the buffer instead, right, for new construction.
Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
You said in your presentation, you spoke to the one neighbor in the back and he's okay with this and that, just concerned is with the fence. How many neighbors are back there?
Three.
Three.
Three neighbors.
So, you just heard from one. We don't know the feelings of the elderly back there?
We, as far as I know, my coworker was actually the one that spoke with the neighbor behind the site. As far as I know, he didn't speak to anybody else. From what I understand, that neighbor behind us was the most vocal resident in the area, so I think he just made it a priority to speak to him.
Still, it's one of three or four.
One, yeah.
All right. Ms. Mitchell.
So, just in response to one of the concerns that the neighbor took. So just in, in response to one of the concerns that the neighbor to behind had indicated was with regard to the fence and the condition of the fence, and we had provided some actual photos taken this last week, and we looked at it. He, and the particular neighbor had asked for a replacement of the fence. From a structural standpoint, the fence is fine. The issue is, is the, you know, it needs, it needs a facelift.
Staining of the paint.
Right, so we just wanted to show that, you know, there were no weak spots that we could detect just from our observations, and so we would recommend just the facelift. Secondly, I guess I just wanted to point out, at the end of the day, Mr. Mosher, who was, could not be here, provided, I don't know what you call that, but a drawing that indicates some of the limitations of the site with regard to truck turning movements, and that's just an illustration with regard to when they, when they have deliveries, what amount of parking in the back or the parking area is needed to make appropriate turnarounds.
Anything else, Ms. Mitchell?
No.
Okay. Mr. Zeeman, can we go out of sequence here? Is that permissible? I mean, because the buffering seems to be the big concern.
You certainly control your agenda, Mr. Chairman, if you feel as though that, that vote is, should, should take priority. That's your prerogative.
Okay. So let's, let's vote on number nine first. Number nine is the reduction of the buffer. Any questions, comments, commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this item on the conditions of the buffer relative to the CUP that must be granted, subject to the three conditions stated.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Jessica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
No.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
No.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Snow.
No. So I think number eight becomes mute then, doesn't it?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, the applicant could potentially go back to the drawing board. I would request findings of fact, of course, Mr. Chairman, but, but, but no. Obviously, the use could potentially still locate there. It just, it may require some redesign or...
I think you indicated initially that the buffering was a deal killer, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, again, I don't want to foreclose the possibility of a redesigned store, a different footprint, some, something unique where it could...
So let's do findings of fact. Anybody that voted no, you need to explain the reason for your no vote. Jess.
Mr. Varga.
Well, it just seems clear to me, especially with this last document that shows that the property is inappropriately small for the function you're trying to do, within the constraints that are, that preexist, the decision to pick this property. So these things should have been taken into consideration from the beginning, and I think it's, you know, it's, the problem is self-explanatory then.
Okay.
Mr. Cicero.
Basically, the same comment. I think this drawing shows why the plot looks too small for your business. And even yourself, when you talked about the number of parking spaces, even with the buffer variance you're looking for, you still didn't have enough parking of what you would prefer. It just feels the plot's too small.
Mr. Cook.
Property's just too small.
Mr. Perkovic.
I, I do believe that the buffer should be held for the patrons, or excuse me, the residents that live behind, even though there was one that was spoken to, there were more that should, that it does impact.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes, I agree, and I think the site's a little too tight, it's a little too small. Number two, if I lived behind that fence, I want some assurances that the city is looking after my interests and not use the buffer as a tool to correct something that just doesn't seem right or proper for this site.
Mr. Snow.
I think the site's too small.
Okay.
So you want us to vote on number eight?
Yeah, go ahead and vote on number eight, please.
Okay. Any comments relative to the site, not the site, but the CUP relative to the use? Any comments, questions? Intertain a motion.
Motion to approve the CUP for the site conditions, subject to five conditions.
I'll second.
Now, I have a question for Mr. Zeeman before we call for the vote. Does this any way jeopardize our negative vote on the other item?
Well, no, again, they are separate items. Reduction in the buffer is, is, is an independent aspect of what's being requested. Now, there may be, there may be overlap. Some of the comments obviously may inform your decision about whether or not this use and this, and when we're talking about this use, it may be appropriate to have an automotive repair tire shop here. I guess the question is, this particular applicant that's in front of the board and the particularities of their business operations, how it's going to function on a day-to-day basis, is this an appropriate location for this specific operator? And, and so that's, that's where your judgment would come in relative to, to that vote.
Okay. Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Tiedemann.
No.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
No.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
To give you a chance to go back to see if you can rework this, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Still fails, right?
We'll still request findings, sir.
Okay. For the no votes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Just think it's much too close to residential, too, just too small.
Mr. Varga.
Just based on the way the, the operations of the facility are described, it's, and with the understanding that the buffer's not approved, that I don't think you can operate the, and I think you've said, stated that yourself, you're not going to be able to operate this facility the way you're going to do it on this piece of property.
Mr. Cicero.
Same comment. I didn't see anything here that would make me comfortable approving.
Same, just too small.
Okay. Let's move to the next one.
All right, thank you.
Item ten, miscellaneous review of a second point of access on East Avenue. It's my understanding that's going to be dismissed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to remove it from the table.
Motion to remove...
Second.
Item number ten, undertaken.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Dismissed with, without prejudice, Larry?
Yes.
Motion to dismiss item number ten without prejudice.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item eleven, new business, preliminary site plan of commercial building, Discount Tire at eighty-eight oh seven. That's, becomes mute at this point.
Yes, recommend dismissing it without prejudice.
Okay. So moved? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Jess.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Miscellaneous review of Curbside Express Grocery Pickup at eighty-three sixty-three, eighty-three eighty-three Tyler. Welcome back. No, it's not welcome back. Right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Pasquale Volio, Director of Real Estate Development with Giant Eagle Inc. I also have here this evening Nick Deutschew with DLA Architecture. That's the architect for the project. We're here, actually, I guess it's about a year ago, Miss Glancy was here with the overall development approval for the, the marketplace, and we're here this evening to go over the miscellaneous review with respect to the Curbside Express.
Now, you've got a new concept, right?
The building has changed. I think when we had the initial preliminary application meetings and also the planning commission, we didn't have our floor plan finalized. Since that time, we, we finalized the floor plan and also the Curbside Express business and how you execute that has changed since a higher proportion of online ordering has been occurring itself. And with that, I think we had provided for an area for the Curbside Express at the right front corner closest to Center Street. There's a little bit of an area pool out on the original plans. Since that time, we've moved it to a dedicated area where all the staging would be inside of the building itself for the curbside, and the program works similar to what it has at other locations. I think the nearest location is Solon, Ohio, where it's at the, the front corner of the building, but since that time, we've found that it's best to actually have a dedicated area outside of the main customer, pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic, and relocated it to the left side of the building itself. I think in the staff report and in the application materials provided, we gave a verbal description of the, the program and how that operates. And, you know, this is not like a traditional drive-through facility or pharmacy drive-through. It is where you order in advance, same day is at least three hours, the orders are prepared at least three hours in advance. People don't randomly come in there. If they do, you know, they're told to come back if they're outside of that initial three-hour window. But this is a newer program, and we're continuing to refine it itself. I'm here to gladly answer any questions with respect to that program and any of the materials provided.
Okay.
The secondary aspect in miscellaneous review application was the, the architectural elevations have changed a little bit in the front with the addition of the curbside and the finalization of our floor plant, plan. The vestibules moved a little bit, and we are also showing a outdoor propane storage area, and we received the, the staff comments with respect to that. We believe we can address those items itself with the screening and other elements, but wanted to provide that as a secondary aspect. And the architects here to go over any of the building materials which are similar as to what we had last year, other than the, the curbside green. And we also have an updated perspective showing where the curbside area would be and how that access is. So I can go on, there's quite a bit of materials, but I'm here really to answer the questions.
Why don't we go to the questions? I'm sure there are some. Commission members' questions for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
What's the green all about? Explain the green. I only say that because all the rest of the building is earthdirt.
The, the green aspect is basically, it's the, the branding for Curbside. It's hard to actually see up there from, you know, the color samples and the, and the elevations with the lighting, but it's, it's part of the, you know, try to differentiate that because it actually is a new tenant of the, of the business itself. And Giant Eagle is kind of, you know, organized into four structures of separate operating entities. One of them is, I can't say internet, but it's a, the online marketplace and ordering system with prepared foods and including the curbside element itself. So it's to try to differentiate a little bit from, this is an area of the curbside that's on the far left of the building itself.
One of the things that's become obvious to me is, for instance, you use a certain size of, of signage in different places on the elevation of the building, and even in this drawing, you can hardly read that. So I'm, I'm just wondering, it seems to be downplayed from a, from an informational point of view, and I don't know if people know what the green stands for. Let's set that aside for a minute. I think the reduction in, of fenestration of glass and detail in this, this western half of the building on the, on the south side makes it look awkward and maybe awful, awful industrial-looking. You've reduced the amount of glass by at least fifty percent, and I don't think that's very attractive. So, I mean, before it was kind of marginal. I wasn't overjoyed with it, but at least it, it had a certain amount of interest. Now I think the windows become just symbolic, and they really don't create any kind of proportional play on that whole face. So I guess what I'm looking for is more definition on that face now, so it doesn't look so industrial. I mean, it is a food store, so I'm thinking it, it shouldn't just be this huge massive masonry wall with a few small windows in it. So from that point of view, and then another, just one other question. You show this slight variations in the south and the west side. Are you then suggesting or stating that the other two elevations are the same as they were before, with no changes?
Well, let me hit first the, and that's one of the reasons we have the architect here with respect to, and what I've put here is, on here, the original elevations that were approved approximately a year ago, the current elevations as they're proposed, then for the front, and then also on the left elevations itself, both proposed on the left-hand side here where my hand is up and down, and on the right-hand side itself. With respect to the two other elevations, what I have found in just looking at some of the information is that we actually added glazing on that. At the rear elevation, we had four windows. We've added five of the same side, and on the pharmacy side, there were additional windows that were not on the approved elevations that were added. And I did not realize that, you know, when the, when the architect provided the initial information itself. But, you know, the glazing is more, and we would come back with and present that if, you know, that information...
Well, that's fine. I mean, in fact, more, more, glazing is more interest to the building. My concern is the west half of the south elevation has fifty percent less glass and is a lot less interesting, just proportionally. So I guess my interest is, what can be done to make that, that elevation more interesting? Because right now, it's a two-story masonry wall with a couple smaller windows in there and nothing else going on, and that's the main, that's your front elevation. I'm, I'm just thinking that's kind of, and it's, you know, a less interesting color relative to the warmer tones on the right. So I guess what I'm just saying is I'm dissatisfied with that elevation change.
With respect to warming color, that's the green for the limited area of green that's indicated, you know, at the, where the, the addition of the, the entry point to the curbside and along the building.
Yeah, I, I, what I'm saying is that that's the highest elevation of the building. It suggests there's a large mass or a large open space on the inside. The larger windows alluded to that, that there was some anticipation that these windows were in a large space and they were letting light in, and it was more interesting. This, I'm not sure what this tells me now, but it's, I'm just saying, it's less interesting to me. I don't really care for the change in that area. You want to...
The practicality of it is that it's a...
I want to...
Sorry, I apologize. It, it became a practical issue. The, the larger windows that we're showing initially, the program of the building changed, the floor plan changed. Right now, we have a roof structure that comes about half height at those original windows, and we tried different ways to solve that problem and preserve the windows, but it became impractical. We couldn't create a tight building envelope with a roof structure coming halfway the height of those windows, so that's why we lowered the heads of the windows.
Could you have dropped the windows, the sills of the windows to create more light? What, what is in that space? I don't know the plan.
Behind, we have a, we have a cooler and a freezer.
In that, and that's the highest elevation of the building?
Right.
And that's just coolers and... Well, I guess my original statement stands. I, I find it less appealing than the original. I understand the change. I think I'm looking for something else to be done to make it more attractive.
And if I, if I heard you correctly, maybe lowering the sill?
Well, I'm just saying, yes, and, and right now, it's very static. The windows are kind of smaller and they're kind of evenly placed, and there's really not a lot going on there. Maybe the windows be, you pull the sills down or something, open it up more. If, if there's nothing on the other side you don't, you want to show or you want to open up, maybe you do something else to this huge wall, but it's really, it's a two-story masonry wall, and it faces, that's your front elevation, faces the public. It's kind of intrusive, in my opinion. I don't want to get too negative, but the rest of the building is fine, but I think that's just not working for me, especially when you stick this green thing on the end. I understand your concept of the green and the function, but I'd like to see that wall be more interesting. Okay? Thank you.
Thoughts?
Well, I think, and just if I understand correctly, the original elevation... Well, I think, and just if I understand correctly, the original elevations, the glazing, the height of the glazing itself was limited because of the
Because of the roof structure.
The structure itself. So, and that was probably because we didn't have the floor plan developed at that point in time, and we'd indicated that glazing. I think we can easily add glazing down, going up vertically higher. Again, the only thing that you would see would be the, well, it would be interference with the structural element itself or the structural steel to support the roof.
Right now, the sills of, sorry, right now, the sills of the windows are set above the freezer and core, so they're actual windows. Dropping the sills would be, you know, be like a full window.
Well, I'm not saying you have to do this, whatever you want to do with the windows, but I think the elevation before had a certain kind of, you know, three element. There was window, window, and then an equal space. It was kind of balanced, and there was some interest. You put signage on that section of the wall, you know, on the original one. Now it's just a huge wall with much smaller windows and no interest. I'm just saying, it's my opinion. I'm just saying, though, that I find that change not a positive change. I see it as a negative change, and maybe you need to do something else with that wall that's maybe not a window then. Maybe if it's really a space you don't want windows in, maybe windows are not the way you articulate that wall. Maybe you do something else.
Mr. Chairman. May I add, just relative to Mr. Varga's comment, would, I myself like that original elevation better with the glass. Hearing that the glass may not work, is there a way to create that out of a false unit? You know, still getting the look of the glass, even though maybe only a portion is actual glass or that whole thing goes away, that window, but it still takes on that appearance from the original?
We actually explored those opportunities. The nature of the construction, it's a single with bearing masonry wall, applying something. So there's no room within the thickness of the wall to create anything. Applying something, it just, in our experience, leads to problems. It's very difficult to keep it watertight. Moisture gets in there, it creates problems, and especially if there's glass, eventually will look uglier when, as it ages. One of the thoughts that we had was, I understand the comment about the signage and maybe more interest, but maybe working with the space between the main entrance and the two windows, maybe creating something in that space, maybe adding a full window. We can explore those opportunities.
Yeah, I'm not trying to tell you how to do it. I'm just saying that right now, this change is less than what you had before, and I don't like it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
On Mr. Varga's point, why can't, have you considered just running your window horizontally contiguous, so it really provides a view into the building and provides natural light? Just run it, you know, contiguous. Have you thought of that?
Wait, where?
Kind of opens it up.
The point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so in essence, it looks, as the entry shifted to the right a little bit, it became, we added more items in the center area, but it left it unbalanced there that you have two windows and there's one area that's blank where the sign was shown.
So what you brought us originally was something that wasn't entirely thought out internally?
Well, we knew at the time it wasn't, even when we had, I think, and I think one or two of you may have been at the pre-app conference, that we did not have the floor plan defined because it was being developed as a new prototype. So it wasn't, the floor plan wasn't available, and we worked with what we had at the time. That said, you know, I think we can look to add either a faux window, another window to try to add additional architectural elements or fenestration along that side or along that facade of the higher two-story element facade that's on the left side of the building. Again, you know, with respect to the green, we do want to have the curbside green, the canopy and some of how that entry area is set up does provide some fenestration.
So based on Mr. Varga's comments, what can you do?
Well, I was looking at the floor plan in that there is in that area, you know, true vision glazing, which is always our preference to provide light in, may not be possible because that's identified as a produce prep area behind that wall where the old beer and wine sign was. But we could probably add a faux window in there and look to drop the sill down where the other glazing, where the two windows remain, to try to, you know, bring it down lower so there is additional glazing itself. Because there is a gap between the low-level landscaping that's proposed in that area as a foundation planning and the bottom end of the sill.
So can you move anything internally?
From a practical perspective, no. Not, not right behind that corner of the wall itself.
So what do you think?
Could be able to extend that glazing.
I haven't looked at it. Well, I might make the recommendation that we table this and then have you come back and look at this and see what can be done, because I just, I think you moved in a direction that's not very attractive, and this is your prototype. You should have something better worked out as to how this is, how this would work. I'm not saying that, again, I just want to reiterate, I'm not trying to solve this for you. I'm not trying to say another window will make it work or big, I'm just saying what you had before was better than what you have now, and if you can't do much with those windows, I would take it back and figure out what you can do to try to make it more interesting. I mean, that's, we had approved elevations. You're asking us to approve changes? My opinion, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but I don't think this is approvable based on what you had before. You have all the reasons why this happened, but we approved them before, and I'm not sure this is better than what you had. So I'm not saying you have to go back to what was approved, but I think you need to address this with a little more finesse.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. It's a little big motion, but I would suggest you, I would suggest you retable this and give you the ability to come back and relook at this section of the building.
Let me ask one question. With respect to the curbside elements itself, regarding, irrespective of the change in the front facade, is there any issue with respect to that aspect of what we're proposing?
In my opinion, again, I'm just speaking for myself, not any other member, yeah, I guess we could live with that if the rest of the building was a little more attractive. In my opinion.
Second, that motion.
Okay, he's been moving second in the table.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
What am I voting for?
Table.
Table, yes.
He made the motion.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
The next meeting is approximately three weeks from this, so.
Three weeks. Yes. And I would suggest that you show all four elevations, especially if they're changing.
Was any elevation to change was the original request?
Correct, because they were approved.
Side by side, so.
Luminaries site plan of a commercial building in 6866 Center Street. You're on a roll, so we'll keep going.
Once again, I'm Doug Kincaid of Interstate Construction, construction manager for Thomas Five, the Wendy's franchisee. Rich Kenzriedy is here with land design, and I'll let him discuss the changes and modifications for the site plan that have been accomplished with staff review. Some of the conditions on the staff report we've taken care of, as explained before, we reduced the entrance and the exit to 20 feet, including new landscape islands encompassing the four spots. In addition to that, we included the bike rack pad with the sidewalk connecting to Center Street right of way and access to the sidewalk. We included the bollards. We do have the bollards shown around the patio, and they'll be in accordance with the standard set by the city. We have, we have a landscape plan in process, along with the photometric plan that we'll be submitting tomorrow for final. And I did, but you want to discuss the brick? So basically, the site plan that will be submitted for final has been modified to, I believe, meet all of the staff recommendations. So going on to the building, the staff did have several recommendations, which we do appreciate. We will be submitting revised color renderings. I do have some revised ones if you would like to see them close up, or I can just set it here.
So is this typical of what I might see in other cities?
No, yes. Yes, this design has been out for about a year.
Okay.
And this is their, one of their newest designs.
Where in the area might I see this?
Right now, I think Morgantown, West Virginia and Charleston, West Virginia.
Too far.
It's still different from, there was one built a couple years ago in Painesville, Ohio, but, and it's similar to this, but this is newer yet. The inside of the building will have an open ceiling in the dining room, and they are really trying to redesign this, to open it up, make it very inviting, just like with the idea of the patio, that, you know, trying to have a very inviting environment. One of the suggestions that staff made that was an excellent idea was the rear of the building is going to be facing the shopping center. Typically, back there is the cooler freezer, and it's a brown metal, and they recommended brick. We are willing, Thomas Five is willing to do that, and this revised elevation right here is showing that the entire cooler freezer will be enclosed with brick. That brown above it is just a flashing, and you won't, in reality, that's just through the CAD and rendering by the architect, but basically this now has brick all the way around the building, so enclosing that cooler freezer. Staff commented about the red, and on the rendering, the red does look pretty red. I brought a sample of the actual red ethos. The approval could even be contingent upon this sample, but this is the red, and I think you can see it's a softer red.
It's more of a maroon.
Well, it's Wendy's red. But, and, you know, you can keep the sample, it can be conditional, a part of the approval. And then it was commented about, you know, City Market Development has a certain brick or brick look that they're using, and rather than just showing you small samples, I thought it would be better to show you a larger sample. This is the brick look of City Market. It is actually a structural block made to look like brick. The Wendy's is a wood frame building, and so we would like to use a regular brick, and we would be fine if you feel that this is, meets the intent of actually letting the approval specifically specify this actual brick. And we felt, and we searched around to find something that had a similar appearance, and so we would be fine using this brick if this is acceptable or if we need to present this at final approval. I don't want to be too early on this, but just letting you know that we wanted to work with staff's recommendations, and we appreciate their recommendations. But once again, whether approval tonight or when we appear before the commission for final approval, we're willing to commit to specific brick, that specific ethos, and the brick around the cooler freezer. So I think that those respond to staff recommendations. If you have any other questions about site or building, let us know.
Okay, I think this is a preliminary, so I'm glad you pointed out those areas, because there's always a concern about brick and colors and that type of thing. So I appreciate staff bringing that to your attention.
Right.
So, comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Just one quick technical question. The ethos, the red ethos, are there joints or lines, or is it just a huge?
It, actually, there will be horizontal lines that line up with the windows.
It'll be broken up.
It'll be broken up, and I apologize if it really didn't show well in the color rendering.
That's fine. We had, when we first had this project with the overall development brought before us, one of the constraints that we made to the developer was that these outlots would be designed so that not only would there be a finished facade to the outside, but there would also be a finished facade to the inside. Now, a couple weeks ago, we had a Taco Bell, same kind of scenario. I know that your competition is in, but I'm just going through the scenario here, where they have a similar building, different, they, different materials, but they do have a kind of tower element they put their name on, and it's offset and it's in the corner. And we asked them, and they did, provide a secondary one facing the inside of the building, the inside of the site. And I would suggest, just in this, in the vein of being consistent with the way we deal with all these outlots and the way that these projects come into play, that you have your red element facing the outside of the project. And I appreciate the brickwork that you included to cover your things, your coolers, but I'd like to see the same red element on the other elevation to the left-hand side.
Actually, that's a great idea.
And put your logo on that.
Right.
And I'm not going to tell you how to do it. I'm not going to tell you where to put it.
Right.
I'm just saying that that's what we asked Taco Bell to do, and they went along with it. I'm not saying that's your justification, but I'm trying to be consistent with the way we deal with these.
And visibility to the shopping center is key, so.
And so it's the same thing. So you have this red element on the shopping center side with your Wendy's on it, and you incorporate it however it works for you, so that this is not just a utility end of the building.
Right.
It also has a primary elevational presentation that is consistent with other approvals we've made here and consistent with the approval of the overall development.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Eriksen.
Probably want to just kind of chime in a little bit on this, that architectural element. One of the things that we were seeing when we were doing the sign code revision is we were seeing elements like this, and you'll notice there's no return on it. It doesn't, it's, it really doesn't appear outwardly to serve any actual function, but it does serve a function, which is to get the sign higher up. And so we had a few instances in the city previously where we were getting these architectural elements, and clearly they served no other purpose other than to get the signs a little bit higher up. And so the sign code actually doesn't prohibit the copy to be placed where it's placed because it's above the lowest portion of the roof line. Therefore, it's a roof sign, and even a parapet wall sign is included in the definition of a roof sign. So, you know, before we start adding this element, all the other, you know, and that copy on other elevations, understand that that copy is actually placed too high. It would not comply with our sign code, and the administration could not issue a permit at that height. So maybe it gets reduced down a little bit in terms of the overall height of that element, or they can always request a variance from the BZA, of course, but.
Well, let me ask another question to address that comment. If I'm not mistaken, and I know we're a little off your path, but Taco Bell had a similar component, kind of a tower-like component, in one side of the front.
We're running to that.
And we add, and we added that to the back, and they were, they went along with that.
I don't know that the, I don't know if the actual logo is above the lowest portion of the roof line on the Taco Bell.
Okay.
And we get into permitting issues, too. So again, sometimes things get called out in permitting, but again, since there was a discussion about adding this specific element for additional copy.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at.
I don't recall the Taco Bell having that, the, that element. I don't recall the Taco Bell having that, the, that element, getting that high above the lowest portion of the roof line.
It was taller than the lowest.
But, yeah, but that's, that's pretty significant in this application.
What I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to get the composition of their primary elevation, and a component of that on both sides. Okay, so let me, let me not be so specific about the signage, right? Let me just say that we're looking for the presentation on the internal side of the building to be similar, similar with the components that you put on the out-facing elevation. And signage has to meet the requirements that the city places upon it.
And I think that could be addressed, because the way that Wendy's elements are built, they're not just sitting on top of the roof, they are actually a structural part of the building, it's really a different roof elevation. So Wendy's on, say, this building, there are various elevations of roof. And so I realize by code, most signs cannot extend above the roof, but the blade does have a roof.
Yeah, well, we're a little bit more loophole close than that. The lowest portion of the roof. So if you've got a variable roof line, as they're trying to do in this application, you look at the lowest portion of the roof, and that becomes the height of any wall signage that can be put up, so...
Well, like I said...
So again, if the only reason to have that element as high as it is, is to support a sign, that's a discussion that they need to consider.
And I'm just trying to get the both ends of the building to be similar. So you deal with the sign requirements as they are, but I'd like to see, if that primary element, this big red element, setting aside the signage issue, as you describe it, I'd still like to see the primary, some of this primary on the other side, so that it looks like there's a, there's a kind of a primary elevation on both sides. And that's consistent with other approvals, that's consistent with the approval of the development in general.
One more question. Roof mounted HVAC?
They are, but this building is quite a bit different than previous Wendy's buildings, where the parapets were very low. These have very tall parapets, and the line of sight...
So I won't see it.
You won't see it. The top of the HVAC unit is, if it's above the parapet, it's very minimal, and line of sight from six foot on the ground, you will not see it.
Well, let's, let's...
That's another question.
Yeah, let's define that a little closer. We concern ourselves with the visibility of the mechanical units from the primary street.
Right.
As you approach the site. We don't want to, basically, we don't want to see the units, so...
That would be correct, yes.
Take that into consideration. It's not just, it's not just standing next to the building.
I want to ask Larry, the code, the code is a foot higher?
That's for ground mounted. The code states a foot higher.
Okay, what about roof mounted?
Roof mounted, we just don't, it needs to be screened from off-site views.
And that would be the primary street. You've got Center Street, as you approach the site from Center Street...
And Tyler.
And Tyler, right, yeah, I don't know if you see it from Tyler, but yeah, we don't want to see the mechanical equipment.
Right.
I'd say go all the way to the corner of Tyler and Center Street, and if, not to see it from that location.
Okay, preliminary approval. Is there a motion?
I guess what we can do, preliminary approval with the, with the condition, additional condition, that the architectural element is added to the inboard side of the building. And that will see the, that would be the condition for the architecture. And the rooftop units, make that two. And the rooftop units are not seen from...
Okay.
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Mr. Teeman. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Pergovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Final site plan and architecture review of commercial building, assisted living at 8161 Norton Parkway.
Dave Mitchell here on behalf of LTC Realty Holdings 8 LLC, who is both the applicant and the property owner. Joined by Dan Cirque, the project architect, as well as Alan Wiley, our civil engineer. I think everybody was here, but Chairman Snow, at the May 3rd Planning Commission meeting, where you unanimously approved our request for miscellaneous review of an amendment to the Newell Creek development plan to allow this proposed facility, and you approved a preliminary site plan with relatively few comments. So we have made relatively few changes to the building and the site plan. We did, however, address those comments, and are willing to live with the remaining comments that are in the staff report, just as a summary of some of the changes. Most of the comments related to the north side of the building here, and visibility of the delivery area in the back. So we have a three-foot retaining wall to shield this delivery area with some fencing above it. That fencing, we didn't provide a detail of, but it'll probably match the fencing that screens the dumpsters over on the nursing home, behind the nursing home. So they'll, they'll look similar. And the materials on the building are all similar to what's been used on the nursing home as well. We've addressed by letter all of the comments in GBC Designs' letter. We agree to reconstruct any disturbed areas within the bike path easement. We will install the directional signage around the circle in the front to indicate that's a one-way counterclockwise direction. We will install the shade trees as requested and required by 116207. And the actual site plan does provide a lighting plan, which we believe conforms to 116903. If there's any further questions or comments about that, we're happy to address those. And I guess the only additional changes were, we showed the generator and transformer location that will be screened as well. And then we've added on the landscaping plan, some additional evergreens, which were requested just, just north of the rear driveway, to provide additional screening to the folks who are down the hill below, to try to screen that delivery area. So other than that, the building has not changed at all. We have samples of the materials here, there's a photograph of this board included in your packet. But again, all the materials are the same, with some slight color variations from the nursing home.
Kathy, any comments from the administration?
No, nothing at this time. I, well, with the exception that the first condition is probably not needed if the approval goes, goes forward.
And just one final comment. We are part of the Newell Creek Homeowners Association, and we have obtained their written approval for the design and materials of the building.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
What is the screening around the generator area? It's called by the screening, but what is it?
Vinyl fencing.
PVC.
PVC.
Is there any concern about, well, this is an emergency generator, right?
Correct.
Okay, so how often do you test it?
I don't know the answer to that. Once a month, I think, is a minimum requirement.
My only concern is the sound. Vinyl siding doesn't do anything to knock the sound down. Again, I'm concerned about those down, down-the-hill residents. Could you enclose the southern, or the northern border?
Yes.
The northern edge of this with a masonry wall, rather than a vinyl wall? I don't care if your residents hear the generator grow, but can you knock down the sound before it goes to the north where the residents are?
Just to introduce myself, Daniel Cirque, 1322 Old River Road. The building, existing building, has a generator positioned rear, in the rear as well, and it's screened by the same fencing technique. These are not the extremely loud generators that you may be familiar with. This is a life-safety generator, and minimum, minimum facility generator. It is exercised, I believe it's every 45 days, to keep it maintained. And if you would like, I could go out there and check to see how it sounds. There's been no complaints of the current generator.
You're talking about with the facility next door?
Next door. It's got a generator, probably, knowing the site, I would say it's very, if not closer to the edge of the property. And the other unique thing about the site, when I was studying that extra landscaping, is that we're, we're at the larger slope of the hill, as we come. So if you're at the house at the bottom, you're going to really be looking up a hillside to get it.
And the sound will go over the top, possibly.
That's my contention. And then, just to point out with Alan, where we do show these trees right here, because the slope is so severe, he was able to kind of give me a little scope there to get these to sit, and not be on the slope, so they do rise up. And we did add, there will be a masonry wall there, and then fencing above it. So it's sort of like two tiers of, of protection from that.
The elevation, the northeast elevation and the northwest side elevation on the, on the packet that has the binding on it, there is a, there is a area where there's a equipment screening, down on the lower level. You see it from the side on the...
That's correct.
What equipment?
That is the kitchen, and that is the makeup air unit for the kitchen. As the exhaust fan is sucking air out, you've got to feed air back in. It's a low volume, just replacing the air.
It's not a noise issue?
No, not the current one either. The current one sits just actually below the deck.
Well, in both cases, my concern is, again, with the people right below you, just as we've shown some concerns for other residents that are adjacent to these projects. I just want to make sure we're not...
To the owner's concern is the resident, that he's trying to occupy that room that's near there as well. So it's a concern for both the owner and the residents.
So we'll take, we'll take, we'll take that response as, you do not see that as a noise or a problem to the...
I would say that we do see it as a noise issue. So we've addressed it by installing a generator with sound attenuation built into the device itself.
Into the generator.
And it also sits on spring isolators, so that it doesn't transfer that noise.
That's the generator, and also, and also this return air unit.
The return air unit, I doubt that has spring isolation, but it's a low volume, so it's not a howling piece of equipment.
Okay.
Is that, I've actually, when the building was first occupied next door, I actually stood out on the deck to kind of see if I could hear it. And it's, it's a quiet hum of a device replacing air to the hood.
The assurance that you're giving us as a group is that these will not be annoyances to the people below?
Based on practical experience of what we did next door. Yes, sir.
That was my question, thank you. Anything else? When you test the generators, what time of the day do you test them? And I'm asking that for a specific reason. We had some testing go on at Avery years ago, that happened at four in the morning.
Yeah, at our...
Assure me that that won't happen.
At our current facilities, they do it either first thing in the morning, or at the end of the day, but not at nighttime.
So the sun is up?
Sun is up.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion. You'll identify the building materials for the administration. Yes.
Actually, in the staff report.
But you'll identify them. So we got them identified, right? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Teeman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Pergovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Preliminary review of outside storage at 8607 Tyler Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Nice to see you all.
Mr. Baton, how are you?
All by yourself?
Good.
Well, thank you for allowing us to appear before the commission tonight. I'm Todd Baton, A&amp;B Inc., this is Todd Christanik from DCC Airfoils. And we're here for the review of an accessory structure and the approval of that same structure. We submitted some site plans, some photographs. What we're looking at is a pre-engineered structure that was put in place based on a request made by the EPA to cover recyclables, pallets, process solution drums that are taken outside and then taken away after they've been used. EPA, their review of the site, and I'm sure Todd could talk to you a little bit more about that, but they asked for a cover. PCC put that cover up and then realized that they missed a step in the process.
And then here we are, right? And then here we are.
Yes, so, do you have any, anything you'd like to say, Todd?
No, I think, so far, so good. Yeah, my error on that, I thought being a semi-permanent, non-fundational-type item there, we were going to be best-in-class here with regards to the EPA's compliance request. I'll cover that, and then here, I find myself here, so...
And all of a sudden, you drew the short straw, you showed up here.
So just to give you a little bit of reference, I don't know if this photograph appears in your packet, but this is what the site looked like prior to that. You can see there's a couple of existing compactors. You can see some of the process barrels there, and recycling containers. And so the, what the structure is doing is covering that and screening that. And if you've driven past that on Route 2, you don't see anything, you essentially see the roof of that structure, but you no longer see any of this. So when I met with the staff at the city, and talked with Mr. Traub a little bit, we thought maybe the best process was, rather than us coming in and just saying, oh, we'll do these things, we would like to work with the staff to see how we can best supplement that with some landscape screening, or some other fencing, or that type of thing. Mr. Traub and I talked about maybe some tall arborvitae's that would grow to a good height that would shield most of the structure. So we're here to ask that we can do that with the staff, and we're open to do, you know, whatever they're asking us to do to screen this.
Comments back from the administration?
No, that would be in concurrence with the condition that we had stated.
So you're fine with that?
Yes.
Commission members, questions for the applicant?
I just have one question, one comment, one question. Is this painted, or is that natural metal?
It actually is a painted metal.
Is this painted?
It's a kind of a coated metal.
Kind of, okay, I was kind of concerned down the road, rusting, or getting ratty-looking. Okay.
So we'll see what you guys come up with at some point, right?
Yes.
We're just going to work with the administration, which is staff. We'll see what they come up with, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, any guidance from the commission? I mean, looking for full screening, or, right now, I think, as you drive by it, there's a lot of scrub brush, and it's pretty well-hidden, now that the, you know...
Everything's in bloom?
Yeah, whereas in the winter, it's clearly visible. So is there any guidance that the commission can afford, the applicant and the administration? Just so they know what they're coming back?
What else did Mr. Traub come up with?
That's why we're talking about the tall arborvitae's, because they would be green always.
I'm being a little facetious with whatever, what else did he come up with?
He didn't give me any further guidance.
So you're looking for full screening, or at least some type of...
I think we want to screen as much as we can of it, certainly.
Thank you.
It was screening from the freeway.
Right.
And your neighbors as well. You can see in some of the photographs, this is probably a good one. As much as we can, we are off the setback enough that we could do something.
Are there any dictates from the EPA about what you can do at that site, in terms of screening?
I don't believe so. We can investigate that, but...
I'm just wondering, we talk about arborvitae, and they say, well, no, it's got to be, the wind's got to be able to blow through it, I don't know.
No, actually, I can comment about there, they're looking not to have anything blowing into the retention pond there. Actually, have a fence on the backside, which I think adding additional landscape would shield that for debris or whatnot from going to our neighbors, or to the street. And we've done some significant improvements on the site there, that, from a beautification standpoint, as well as a compliance standpoint, to try to...
So I think if we leave it up to you guys...
Maybe do we, could you put a, some sort of a timeline on this? Compliance?
Tomorrow, okay?
How about if I offer this to you? If we work with your staff over the next three weeks, we can appear maybe at your director's report, and give you an update on what we're doing, or a subsequent submission after that.
Mr. Teeman, any problems with that?
No, I think, I think the guidance is relatively clear relative to being as fully screened as possible, if that's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement.
Okay. The other question we had is there just some clarity relative to what the applicant had submitted? They had referenced this being a temporary structure, and if that was a reference to the manner of construction, or if in fact this is not going to be there and is going to be replaced, or what the actual future of this is.
Is it a temporary structure?
It was considered temporary because it actually bolts or fastens to the existing parking lot. It's a pre-manufactured structure. It has to go back into the building department for final approval. So it's engineered, it's anchored, doesn't have a foundation, but it's anchored as though it does. So it's a permanent structure. I mean, it could remain there for a hundred years.
So those yellow barrels?
Those are protection around the columns.
Can we paint those?
We can wrap them.
Okay.
Absolutely. And this will have to go back into the building department for final approval, and I have met with Mr. Decker to redo that process as well. And his concern was mainly that it was approved here. We have documents, we didn't prepare the documents, but they've been prepared by a structural engineer.
So it's not going to blow away?
Correct.
So three weeks, director's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, is that okay with you?
It is.
Good. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time and your guidance.
Ms. Laney's review of an amendment to a development plan at seventy-one thirty-four
Good evening. I'm Tim Posar from Medias LLC and Dusty Kinney from Polaris Engineering.
And here we go again.
And here we go again. So we're here for the amendment of the development plan.
So give me the basics of what's different from the last approval.
The last time we came in for approval, it was a private street. Now it's changed to a dedicated street, so that's the biggest change.
What else has changed?
I'll let the engineer address that.
Basically, it's the same number of sublots. The unit footprints are the same. The footprints themselves have been pushed back a little tiny bit within the lot to accommodate the front setback from the right-of-way now, whereas the setback before was established from the center line of the private street. There's still open space provided around the perimeter. The open space is very, actually, I think the open spacing increased a half acre or so, there's about fifty percent of the site is, remains an open space. The alignments of the roads change. The cul-de-sacs actually got a little tiny bit, or at least the radius got a little bit bigger to satisfy the cul-de-sac diameter requirements of the dedicated roadway. Other than that, it's very, the lots themselves actually grew a little bit, I think before they were like fifty-two hundred square feet. These ones are like average about sixty-one hundred square feet, so the lots themselves got a little bit bigger.
Okay, any comments from the administration?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, any comments from the commission? Mr. Varga?
Yeah, here I go again. I just want to make some statements about the village green zoning. The fifteen percent open space requirement isn't satisfied by detention basins. It's not satisfied by the space between the house and the property line. It's not satisfied by the standing water areas. It's not satisfied by the right-of-way. It should be, by definition, by the actual zoning, a village green, a space of common access and use to provide some recreational, some common use. Some people put walks, some people put gazebos, some people do, you know, things to create this commonly accessible space that's dedicated to be the green. And that's a developing idea with a number of the proposals we have in front of us. Some of this is my own personal opinion. I need to get it more organized, I think. But I don't see that dedicated space here that would qualify this for village green, for the fifteen percent. I'm not saying that you don't have open space in different places, but I don't see a place in this plan where you have that kind of dedicated functional common space for the community, which is part of the concept of this village green zoning. So, and I realize that wasn't an issue when this came in front of us the first time. But now that it's in front of us and we've developed and looked at a number of other plans that have come up in front of us, this becomes a central focus of some of the reviews. So I don't want to say, well, your plan doesn't meet the requirements, too bad, you know. That's not what I'm trying to get at. But what I'm looking for is some area, and it looks like there is some central area by the lakes that could be accessible to the general population, where you could have some amenities. I'm not telling you what amenities, I'm just saying commonly-used amenities, some common functionality that would qualify as the green for this village. And so I'm going to ask not only that you redesign it for the reasons you did to make the street public and all that, I would like to see some additional definition of this communal area that is, in my mind, central to the village green zoning. I'm not sure what the process is with that. I know we've, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to indicate was maybe that would be more appropriate during the preliminary subdivision review, since this isn't a review and amendment to the development plan.
No, I understand. I don't really care how it comes about. I mean, but I think I wanted to make that statement about this now so that we can be more consistent about it in the future, too, but that I'd like to see how that concept is integrated in here. And again, we're talking about, I'm not talking about the space between houses or in the property line that may be open. That doesn't really provide any benefit to the community. So we're looking at a fifteen percent area.
Minimum.
Minimum, and that's minimum, right, that is a benefit to the community. And now that the streets are public, it probably should be accessible from those public streets. I'm not telling you how to do this. I'm just saying that that's what I would like to see incorporated into this plan. It may be a little difficult, but that's, apart from the other adjustments you've made, that's something I'd like to see developed relative to this plan.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So what we're voting for on the, Kathy, what we're voting on here is the change from private to public streets. That's the basic, the gist of the item on the agenda. And then we'll get down into the preliminary plan, the next item. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add. Mr. Zeman?
Reports not broken up.
No, again, that's, as was indicated, there are some changes in, you know, the lot configurations, fairly, fairly minor, but...
Basically, what it is, is going from private streets to public streets, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then we'll get to your point.
Okay, sure.
So any questions relative to item sixteen?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
What was your driving force that drove you to change it from public to private?
Other way around.
Other way around.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, private to public, thank you.
It's more desirable as a public road.
Costs come into play?
No, it's virtually the same cost. It's just more desirable for homeowners to have a public road for them.
So the homeowners association doesn't pay for snow plowing and stuff like that?
Correct.
The services?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions relative to item sixteen?
Just one question for the city. What is the effective length of the major cul-de-sac?
That was what, eight hundred foot total?
Well, approximately. From this intersection, is that where you're?
Yes, yes.
From this intersection to here, it's about eight forty.
And the fire chief is okay with that? I know he's...
Well, we will need a waiver, we're going to ask the second part for a waiver on that.
All right, we'll talk about it.
Okay. So item sixteen is what we're voting on now. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody at all?
Motion to approve the amendment to the development plan going from private streets to public streets.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now, seventeen, preliminary subdivision of one hundred and eight residential lots at seventy-one thirty-four Mentor Avenue. Mr. Varga, you're on.
Again. Well, so, just talking about the cul-de-sac. Does the city have a recommendation about the eight-hundred-foot cul-de-sac?
Well, with review, at least by the engineering department, and this was also reviewed by fire, they did not have concerns with the change or the increase in the length.
And just to maybe reiterate, you know, it's rezoned pursuant to a development plan as the city always does in these matters, so that, I don't believe the length of that cul-de-sac changed from what was originally approved to tonight.
No, it did not.
Whether or not that waiver was explicitly stated, it certainly, it was implicitly, you know, a part of the rezoning.
Well, I just, I just want to know, primarily the fire chief, I just want to make sure he's, because he starts to develop, we start to develop a precedent, and we don't necessarily want to do that all the time.
So any comments, any thoughts relative to Mr. Varga's earlier comment about RVG and village green and that type of comment?
Well, what if this area here, we did maybe a little gazebo or something out there? Because you have access through here, you can come through here. Would that satisfy?
In other developments, and I'm not telling you this is what you have to do, but I'm making the suggestion is that there's a series of private walkways or walkways, pedestrian walkways, that allow the residents to have access to some of these features, like the lakes, like the, you know, like the character of the subdivision. So what I'm going to say, and I don't, again, I don't want to, I don't want to tell you what to do, I mean, I don't want to design it for you, but I think it should be a space that is accessible from the public right-of-way, from the people in this area to be able to go and walk and have access to this fifteen percent open area that might have amenities like cul-de-sac, I mean, like gazebos, like benches.
Okay.
Like maybe some exercise equipment. I don't want to, again, you know, it's something that might be an exercise loop, or maybe it's just something that applies to children, you know, like a small playground or something. But that, and picnic tables, you know, so that it becomes the village green that people can come to and have some functionality, other than just the sidewalks and the backyard.
Okay, we could work with the city on coming up with a game plan and bring that in for the final, if that's acceptable.
And they could show you some other examples, and you could kind of work through that.
Noel Creek.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we'd be more than happy to work with the city and come up with something.
That's okay, that's okay.
One of the staff, you know, we will be developing a landscape plan as this moves forward, and I know that as part of the original approvals, there's a percentage of landscaping that's being maintained between Mentor Avenue and the entrances, so some of those things could be incorporated into that as well.
Right, that detail could be incorporated into a landscape, an overall landscape plan. That would be very, that would be acceptable.
Absolutely.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion to address the village green aspect in the future landscape plan as worked out with the city.
We were good with all the conditions. The only thing I wanted to do is make sure we get in the minutes that we're asking for a waiver on the cul-de-sac length.
Approving this by development plan, so do we need a separate waiver?
Yeah, like I said, I don't know if that was ever explicitly stated previously, but maybe that's something that, you know, can be explicitly stated now. Again, it...
So we'll include that as one of the conditions.
May I modification to item two? Just indicate that the planning commission waives the six-hundred-foot limitation on the cul-de-sac.
Based on the comments that we received from engineering and fire?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Preliminary site plan of a commercial building, car wash at sixty-nine eighty-five Center Street. Fire chief and the engineer in there.
Well, this is, this is the return of that. We met with the city, as we mentioned earlier, last week to go over the preliminary site plan. They gave us several items that they had concerns about, and so we revised the site plan to make sure that we addressed all the concerns that they had. And the staff comments, items seven, eight, nine, and ten, will all be addressed when we submit our final site plan. So for the next hearing, for the next meeting.
Everything else you agree to?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything else you'd agree to.
Kathy, is that okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So anything else you want to share with us? You have building samples?
Those will be turned in.
Okay, on the final.
Right.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? Can you give us the code to the car wash?
Well, we'll have to get you an RFID chip for your car, and you can just zip right through.
So...
That'll be the day.
So any other, any other comments? Questions? Entertainer motion. Seems like you sat around an awful long time for no questions, no comments.
That's just fine with us.
I'll make the motion with the ten conditions.
Seven, eight, and nine you'll deal with?
Seven, eight, nine, and ten are being dealt with, and we've already agreed to the other six.
Okay.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
A review of a reimagined commercial building at eighty-eight fifty-seven Mentor Avenue. The last man standing.
I don't know if I should applaud.
Figured up here to ten-thirty with the cutoff, so I think we're doing good. My name is Martin Johansson. I'm the architect for Lawrence, Lawrence's storefront remodel on Mentor Avenue.
Okay. Now, there was, brought up in the staff report about painting the sides and the rear of the building compatible colors to the awning and stuff in the front. You're going to have to paint the building anyway, correct?
We are. I don't think that we would want it painted the same color as the front. The whole idea behind this is to have the front...
Pop.
Yeah, so we have, I brought some different samples in here, and we can do like a lighter, a lighter brown to sort of go with it, and something that will go with the stone as well, but to still give it some pretty strong contrast so that the whole building doesn't just blur into the one big mass.
Okay, because, you know, there's been substantial renovation on the east side of your building.
There was a, I think they just did that one next to it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you've got some very nice enhancements going on on the avenue there.
Right.
And I think this will be a nice improvement, but I think we want to have some consistency color-wise, and it could be the colors you just mentioned. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same colors as the front of the building. So, what do you have to show us?
Shoving bag here. There was a question on the, when I stopped by about the wood look-in siding that we put in front, so I have that here. Wrap that up. Bring it down a little bit there. And let's see, and I actually brought some pictures. It's a product that's been used quite a bit recently. These photos are not great, but they're using it at the University Heights Library. They just clad it in that material. Some of them are, I see it here, that's probably the best picture. But it is, it's a pretty expensive product. It will last for a long time, and it doesn't require all the maintenance that a regular wood would, so that's the main reason for using it. I brought a stone sample that would go in the columns. So, the idea is that these go together, and then I just have a small thing here with the standings, the metal roof and the trim of the front. There'll be this little guy here. It's called Cityscape, light gray. And then, I'll get, sorry about the noise. I proposed paint color for the sides of the building. Academia knot, it's light color right here, so it kind of ties in with the stone that's on the building.
It's the third one down?
That one there, yeah. The third one down.
What's painted that color?
What is it called?
No, what is painted that color?
That's what we would be painting the sides of the building.
Oh, okay, good. I was going to say, that's a reasonable color.
Yeah. So, that's, I mean, those are all the materials that are going to go in the front. The windows are all existing in the front of the building.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, if we could capture the number of the paint?
Of course.
I can give that to you.
It looks to be consistent or, I should say, complimentary to the building next door.
It's called, yeah.
Nice.
Six, one, four, two.
Yeah.
Academia.
Okay. And you've got the other materials you can give to the city?
You guys can have these if you want, but...
Okay. Larry's building up his collection, so...
I would like to keep one of them.
Edition.
Sir, if you would get one of them. And can I have the stone back at some point?
You can have it back.
No, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, you got to see if you can get it all back in the bag.
Well, yeah. Any other questions on that, or...
I think we're, I think we're cool. You have all the color schemes that you need?
Yeah, we can hear.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, commissioners?
I just have one, one comment. I think what you're doing is fine. We're getting a nice collection of buildings along there that are being renovated. The only issue, it's a detail, very small. Your columns come down and they literally just go right into the pavement. Would you consider putting like at the elevation of the sidewalk some concrete to act as a wheel stop so that people don't hit your columns with their cars?
Yeah, we could do that, or we could...